Let the record reflect that we've reconvened with all members present virtually. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Want to take a moment for moments of silence for you more residents we lost over the past week. Peter Kuva, longtime Madison resident died on January 10th. Was ninety years old, born in Phillipsburg, New Jersey on February 23rd, nineteen thirty. One of nine children, he was raised on a farm in upstate New York after he was orphaned at a young age. At the age of fifteen, he moved to Madison where he lived his teenage years with Mama Lepri. He served our country in the Marine Corps, was a combat veteran of the Korean War. And after returning from service, he married Joanne Schible and the couple settled in Madison and were happily married for fifty years. He always believed in giving back to town where he and his siblings were fortunate enough to have been lovingly raised after losing their parents. He and Joanne supported various social charitable causes for many years, in particular the T.J. Martell Foundation and Interfaith Pantry, Food Pantry Morris County. He was a longtime active parishioner of St. Vincent Martyr Church as well. Although Peter and Joanne never had children of their own, they leave behind many nieces, nephews and other extended families that they treated and raised like their own children. His wife, his wife Joanne Kuva passed away on July thirteenth, twenty twenty, and we all said recognized her at a council meeting. And Paul DeSena, age ninety-four, died on January eighth. Lifelong Madison resident prior to relocating to Manahawken with his late wife Geraldine in her retirement. He was born in Madison on January third, nineteen twenty-seven, raised with his brothers and sisters and was a graduate of Madison High School. After graduation, he served in the United States Navy. He met his beloved wife Geraldine Ola and the couple married on April ninth, nineteen fifty. Setled in Madison where they raised their family and were lifelong parishioners of St. Vincent Martyr Church. He entered the field of dentistry as a young man, was trained as a dental technician. He established the Paul DeSena Laboratories here in Madison. Outside of his career, he was very involved with his children and grandchildren growing up, active member of the Madison community, longtime member of the Madison Ambulance Corps. Paul coached the forum club team for Madison League Baseball, Little League Baseball and was a past president of Madison football, junior football. And then two thousand, Paul and Geraldine retired and made the decision to relocate to Manahawken and he was predeceased by his wife in two thousand twelve. He was survived by his son Frank, daughter Donna, three grandchildren and six great-grandchildren. And we also want to remember Rocco Rocky Piana, a lifelong Madison resident died at his home on January second, the age of seventy. Born in Morristown on May twenty-fifth, nineteen fifty, raised in Madison with his two brothers. Rocky graduated from Madison High School in nineteen sixty-eight, attended college to learn computer programming in the early days of computers. For his recent retirement, he had a career spanning over thirty years, a computer programmer with automatic switch in Farm Park. He survived by his two brothers, seven beloved nieces and nephews, many great nieces and great nephews and many dear friends. So let us take a moment to remember Peter Kuva, Paul DeSena, Rocky Piana, and also New Jersey native, Capitol Police Officer Brian Sicknick, who died defending our country on January sixth. Let us pass our thoughts on to the families they leave behind. Thank you. May I have a motion for the executive minutes on November twenty-third and December fourteenth, twenty twenty?
So moved.
Second.
Any, we've already had discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Right, and a motion for the regular minutes of November twenty-third, twenty twenty.
So moved.
Any, any council discussion or corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, and a motion for the regular minutes of December fourteenth, twenty twenty.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any corrections or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, Happy New Year and welcome to our first regular meeting of the new year. You know, typically we'd be seeing our council members in their new seats as they would have rotated around, especially this year with the retirement of Carmella Vitale. But so we all have to settle for seeing us in our random Brady Bunch slots. It's a little, it's a different world. We did take our council picture earlier this evening in our Brady Bunch slots and so that will be put on board online later on and not only to capture us so people will know who their council members are, but capture it for history. And Bob, welcome back.
Thank you.
Have you here at the table and Don, great to have you ready to take on another term.
Thanks, Bob.
We had a great reorganization meeting on January second and I've already thanked Michael Plessier for all the work as I commented in my reading at the reorganization meeting. But I do want to recognize him a little bit further because he managed that reorganization meeting all from Pacific time zone since he was in Washington State. He put together the various videos from our guests to the pre-meeting opening of the videos that have been produced by Paul Morgan and he also got the video of Jessica Vogel playing the beautiful music going. And when I recognized him for his work during the pandemic in twenty twenty, I did not mention that he is our Zoom guru. When we knew we had to go to virtual, he took on the talent of learning the system. So early on, we were prepared. He was managing countless meetings for our many borough committees and including every one of our council meetings no matter where he was in the state. And he also ran a workshop for other municipalities, helping them get on up to speed in the Zoom world. And of course, he is at the controls as I speak right now. So Michael, thank you for all your work. And another, just an event happening tomorrow morning, I am a speaker at the virtual Madison Chamber Breakfast at eight thirty. And so that it's a topic is on the road to recovery, covering what we were able to do in twenty twenty and looking towards the future. I want to recognize our employees for the month of January. Michael Clancy and Jonathan Finisaro of our Police Department have been selected as the employees for the month of January. The officers quickly responded to help a pedestrian who was struck by a car at Main Street and Waverly Place on Christmas Eve, December twenty-fourth. Aside from helping stabilize the Madison resident, it thoughtfully informed his family of the accident and transported his daughter and her puppy back home. And it just so happened today, we received a letter of thanks from this residence. Let me just read parts of it. Here, officers Finisario and Clancy, thank you. I was a pedestrian struck early morning on December twenty-fourth at Main and Waverly. Your prompt response along with the Madison Ambulance Squad helped stabilize me and ultimately turned a grave situation into a good outcome, probably saved my life. Moreover, your professionalism and thoughtfulness when informing my wife of the incident gave her encouragement through uncertain several hours. You found and brought home my older daughter, was above and beyond the call of duty. Plus, the new puppy got to ride in a police car, which will be the highlight of the story. We have lived in Madison for twenty years and have loved it from day one. Officers, you are both exemplars of the Madison Police Department, which helped make Madison strong and safe. Thank you for that as well. That was very nice at the, at a very difficult time, resident took time to make that note. Also, we have a couple of anniversaries. Hattie Evans, our Deputy Tax Collector, celebrating twenty-five years on January second. And while you can't get into the office to congratulate her, you certainly can put in a note with your next tax payment. And then Stacy Dooley, Purchasing Department Administrative Assistant, her twentieth anniversary will be on January ninth. And I have a proclamation, one of our annual proclamations that we present. We don't have anyone to accept this, but it is important information. This is radon action month, January twenty twenty-one. Elevated radon gases in homes has been identified as a significant public concern. Radon is naturally occurring radioactive gas, it's second leading cause of lung cancer, causing as many as five hundred lung cancer tests annually in New Jersey. Elevated radon levels are found in one in fifteen homes across the U.S. Any home may have a high level of radon, even if the neighboring homes do not. And radon testing is easy and inexpensive and elevated levels of radon can effectively be reduced at a cost of a typical home repair. And a measurable number of homes in Madison are likely to have elevated levels of radon. And if all New Jersey homes radon concentrations above four PCI were mitigated, approximately eighty-three lives could be saved this year. Now therefore, I, Robert H. Conley, Mayor of Madison, on behalf of the governing body hereby proclaim the month of January twenty-first, twenty twenty-one rather, as radon action month. We call on all residents who have not tested their home to test for radon to reduce radon levels if necessary to protect their families from serious health risks. To assist residents, free radon kits are available to Health Department located at twenty-eight Walnut Street until March fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. So please, if you haven't tested recently, please do that. And so here's a proclamation which we will send over to the Health Department. We will now go to reports from committees. Public Safety Council President, Burn.
You're muted.
Maureen, you're muted.
Thank you, Bob. First, let me, from the Fire Department, during the month of December, the Fire Department responded to fourteen general alarms, thirteen still alarms, nineteen investigations, forty-two medical calls, for a total of eighty-eight calls for the month. For the calendar year twenty twenty, the Fire Department responded to two hundred and nine general alarms, two hundred and two still alarms, three hundred and thirteen investigations and three hundred and sixty-nine medicals, for a total of one thousand ninety-three calls for twenty twenty. All firefighters that are EMTS, one A category, have been given the first shot of the COVID vaccine. All firefighters have signed up and a few have already received the first shot of the COVID vaccine, so we're getting vaccinated. And then for the Police Department, the Madison Police Department is pleased to announce a partnership with the Ring Camera and Neighbors Portal, which allows video sharing capabilities and a platform for data sharing as it relates to criminal activity and community alerts. This agreement grants potential access to video footage to law enforcement if a citizen agrees. Chief Justin feels it's a contemporary evolution to the age-old neighborhood watch program. The app can share crime information from citizens to the police and other Ring users and for the Police Department to its residents who utilize the program. This agreement will assist the police with follow-up investigation and help protect our citizen criminals, intruders and thieves alike. The Madison Police have used Ring coverage footage in recent vehicle thefts and burglary investigations with the consent and cooperation of area Ring users. The Madison Police want to reinforce the fact that they will not have access to live video feeds or are told which houses use Ring cameras or how a homeowner responds unless they have the user's consent. This is just another tool to aid in keeping our community safe and holding those accountable who choose to victimize our citizens. And then finally, this is just another friendly reminder to our citizens to lock their vehicles and to remove all vehicles and key fobs. Don't become a victim just because you didn't like your vehicle. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And Finance and Borough Clerk is Bailey.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. An important reminder from the Tax Department, the first quarter property taxes are due February first. And in twenty twenty, we collected over ninety-nine point five percent of the property taxes, which is very good. And a special thanks to Chrissy and Hattie in the Tax Collection Department for doing such a great job under very challenging conditions. And tonight, we didn't have any vouchers to approve because the Edmonds Budget and Accounts Payable System is currently closed as we finalize our year-end accounting. And then the system will be rolled over and opened by the end of the week. And tonight, we will continue our work on the twenty twenty-one budget. Back in December, if you remember, we discussed the proposed five-year capital plan. Now that document is available on RoseNet if you want to review it. And we also passed a temporary budget at the reorganization meeting, which is standard practice among all New Jersey municipalities. The reason why we pass it is so that newly elected officials like Bob Landrigan, who is welcome and back again, can get involved in the budget process right away. And tonight, our engineer, Bob Vogel, will talk about the proposed twenty twenty-one road projects. So typically, we introduce the funding ordinances for the road projects at the first meeting in January, but we are holding off so that we have a little bit more time to review and discuss the budget, just based on all the things that have been happening the past year. The thoughts are to introduce the funding ordinance at the next meeting and then hold the hearing at the first council meeting in February. So this will give us some time to review our revenues, appropriations and surplus and fund balances. Tonight, we're also going to review the Open Space Recreation and Historic Preservation Trust Fund, including last year's activity and potential upcoming projects. And the twenty fourteen Strategic Planning Guidelines continue to guide our budget process. This process always begins in summer when the administration starts developing the capital and operating budgets with the department heads. And then over eight council meetings, the governing body will discuss open space, capital, utilities, the municipal budget and the department operating budgets. As a reminder, we also have three budgets that we vote on and approve. That's the water utility budget, the electric utility budget and the current fund or the main municipal budget. It's a very transparent, open process and voting on the budget is obviously one of the most important things that the council can do. So anyone who has questions about our budget can go on RoseNet and look at the annual budget process. And we, our budget schedule is January twenty-fifth. We will have presentations from the Electric and Public Works Department Heads. We will review the utility budgets and utility fund balance or surplus. And we also hope to introduce the road program funding ordinances. February eighth, the discussion will be on the municipal budget and the municipal surplus or fund balance. And we also plan to have a hearing on the road program funding ordinances. On February twenty-second, we have department head presentations and a second discussion on the draft budget. And at that time, strategic planning guidelines and alternate budget format will be presented. And then if there's consensus, which we hope there will be, we will authorize the administration to draft the official state budget document. On March twenty-second, we have our final budget discussion and then we hope to introduce the official state budget. And on April twenty-sixth, after the minimum twenty-eight day period, the council holds a hearing and adopts the budget. So that is what's ahead of us. It's always very busy at the beginning of the year. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much for that outline. Public Works and Engineering, Mr. Hoover.
Thank you, Mayor. The Mechanics Department under Public Works serviced seven police vehicles in the last two weeks and repaired the EMS two, snowplows, fire department vehicles, as well as DPW vehicles and equipment. Parks Department blew leaves and cleaned sidewalks, bathrooms and fencing at Dodge Field and the trash and recycle can at the Community Arts Center and the MRC where they also cleaned bathrooms. The Parks Department also took care of leaves at several locations, cut up branches and limbs, planted trees and removed animal carcasses. In addition, the skating pond was prepped, sidewalks and crosswalks were plowed and snow was removed around benches. The Pacific Center was cleaned up as well. For Engineering, the five-year capital budget projections were submitted and distributed for review December fourteenth and proposed road improvement budgets will be reviewed again tonight. The two thousand twenty-one road improvements budget is conservative due to pandemic impacts on the municipal budget. Shafano Construction was awarded to Morris County Cooperative Bid for Mill and Overlay Work for two thousand twenty-one. The company successfully completed sixty thousand square yards of milling and seventy-two-hundred-and-fifty tons of asphalt paving for the Borough of Madison in two thousand twenty, with a total contract price of six hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. So it is good news to see these bids were successful again. Dodge Field restroom building requires a final settlement of incomplete items and claims under the contract. A legal notice was sent to the General Contractor, A.B. Construction, to begin that process. Survey of Dodge Field Playground was complete last week and site plans are in process for bidding this year. An updated stormwater management ordinance mandated by the state of New Jersey is being introduced tonight to allow the Borough of Madison to meet compliance deadlines associated with its current Tier A municipal stormwater general permit issued by the Department of Environmental Protection. For the Madison Environmental Commission, the MEC continues to meet with multi-town working groups on green building, green transportation, pesticides and climate action. It is planning an online version of the Green Vision Forum, where students from all Madison schools present their vision for greener Madison. This year's forum will take place in March or April. The mayor and council will be invited, of course. Sustainable Madison, Sustainable New Jersey was awarded, has awarded a Silver Certification for seventy-four actions in seventeen categories for a total of eight hundred and twenty-five points. We had six hundred and sixty-five in two thousand nineteen, including creative assets inventory for the website, environmental justice and planning and zoning, commercial energy efficiency outreach, community garden and green building education. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And Community Affairs, Ms. Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor. Lots to report from the holidays, the, from all aspects of community affairs. Home for the Holiday Shop Local Campaign was very well received. There was holiday caroling and music downtown, which was a great success and added to the festive atmosphere. Secret Santa occurred for, I believe it was five Saturdays, awarded to fifteen different recipients between November twenty-first and December twenty-first. The DDC Reorg meeting is scheduled for Thursday, January twenty-first at seven thirty, seven fifteen via Zoom. And parking permit renewals are ongoing. If you have not already done so, please email parking@rosenet.org with questions or to request an online application. In addition to the downtown holiday, there was the second drive-in concert, A Very Madison Christmas was held on Sunday, December twentieth at the MRC. The concert featured Broadway performers and the students from the Selwood Studios of Madison. The Virtual Holiday Arts Festival was a crowd pleaser as well and was a great way to change that, given the COVID situation, and we look forward to bringing that live, hopefully this year. Chamber of Commerce, there was a record number of Madison gift checks sold between November twenty-seventh and December thirty-first, but please remember, it is a year-round program, great for birthday gifts, Valentine's Day, whatever you've got coming up, they can be used all over the town of Madison. And the Chamber is working on some holiday, some shop local programs to keep the momentum going after the holidays. Two grants were awarded to MACA just before the holidays. The first was thirteen hundred and forty dollars from the Morris Arts for the virtual concert to be recorded at the Art Center, featuring the diverse musicians of Madison. And the second was a twelve thousand dollar grant received from the FM Kirby Foundation to support the purchase of the lighting control board for the Art Center, which is in the process of being mobilized and should be installed early twenty twenty-one. The Senior Citizen Advisory Committee, they are in the process of analyzing past years of utilization as to what the seniors were looking for. We're going to meet in February to kind of figure out what the seniors want going forward and how we can best assist them and are looking to work with Chatham, who Senior Center is still up and running and running events and do a shared services sort of thing back and forth with them. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Utilities, Ms. Erlich.
Thank you, Mayor. The Electric Department reports that on Monday, December twenty-first, the standby crew was called out to a car accident involving utility pole on Woodland Road. The crew performed a temporary repair and then the pole was replaced a few days later. The next day, on the twenty-second, the department responded to a motor vehicle accident on Park Avenue and Madison Avenue, which involved two traffic signals and a fire hydrant. The Electric Department disconnected the traffic signals at the time of the accident and at eight thirty PM, the standby crew was called out to reconnect the traffic signals. And on Friday, December twenty-fifth, the standby crew was called out for a broken temp service caused by a tree branch falling. We thank the standby crew for their ready response on Christmas Day. From the Water Department, as I mentioned, the motor vehicle accident on December twenty-second involved a fire hydrant, which released water when it was struck by a car. This is a rare occurrence in cold weather climates, according to the Water Department. Approximately four hundred thousand gallons of water were lost. The Water Department, with the assistance of the Department of Public Works, was dispatched to the scene to stop the flow of water and replace the broken fire hydrant. That's all for utilities.
Thank you. And Health, Mr. Landrigan.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a reminder that pet license applications for two thousand twenty-one are available now. Renewal notices were sent via email and US mail. Those that have not received their renewal application or have a new pet to register can download the forms on RoseNet. To avoid delayed fee, the application should be submitted by the end of the month. In regards to COVID, as of today, Madison reports four hundred and thirty-three confirmed cases. Fifty of these cases are still under, are still being monitored by the Health Department. These are the highest case counts since the beginning of the pandemic, so it's not getting any better anytime soon. A continuing reminder that non-essential travel outside the region, Pennsylvania, New York, Delaware, Connecticut, is highly discouraged. Those that must travel should follow guidelines for testing and quarantine. More information can be found at covidnineteen nj.gov backslash travel. Residents are encouraged to pre-register for the COVID nineteen vaccine through the state portal. By completing the questionnaire as part of the registration process, you'll be notified when you are able to get the vaccine at a state or county-sponsored vaccination site. The Morris County Regional Mega Vaccination Center opened on Friday and is currently serving healthcare workers as well as police and fire personnel. You're also reminded that you can visit rosenet.org for updates on the vaccination program, testing locations and other pandemic-related items. Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Communications and officials.
Yes, Mayor, council received two communications, an email dated December the twenty-first from Resident Linda Connors of Highview Terrace regarding tree removal at neighbor's property, also on Highview Terrace. And another email received January the tenth from Resident David Spocky of Ferndale Road regarding, let's see, the National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day.
Very much. We are now on to our first of two invitations for discussion. This is the one that is limited to items that are on our agenda discussion or resolutions. There will be another discussion period later on in the meeting when you may comment on any topic. If you wish to comment in this section, you will raise your hand if you're online by clicking the raise hand or you will hit star nine if you're on the phone. And note that for security reasons, we cannot recognize anyone listed anonymous or a call without a phone number identified. When you are, are I, recognize, sorry, and unmuted, you must state your name and address before starting any comments. Failure, did you say, so may result in you being muted or disconnected. And immediately after that, state the agenda item or the resolution you're commenting on. It's a reminder, if you wanted, if it's not one of those things, you have to wait until later in the meeting. Try to keep your comments to three minutes, but we will give you a one-minute grace period and you'll, you'll be stopped at four. And so it's not to take away from your time, we'll capture your questions during your comments and answer them either during the agenda discussion or at some point in the meeting. These are the agenda discussions that we have covered today. We'll be covering the Community Place redevelopment plan. This is the half acre that was formerly part of the South Avenue School property. We'll be doing a budget discussion, open space and road reconstruction overlay projects as outlined by Councilman Bailey. And we have added a discussion and introduction of, or a, another resolution that will be voted on separately, and this is Resolution forty-six, twenty twenty-one, resolution of the Borough of Madison condemning the January sixth seed in Washington. And here are the other resolutions to make comment on. And here are the other resolutions to make comment on. Resolution thirty-eight is a shared service agreement with the Borough of Chatham and City of Summit to provide I T services. Resolution thirty-nine is an authorized and shared service grant application with Chatham Borough, Chatham Township, Morris Plains, Morris Township, and Morris Town for a locally efficient treatment program, which is a LEAP grant. A resolution of forty, a resolution of Borough of Madison approving application for amusement device license and permits for the year two thousand twenty-one for strikes. Resolution forty-one is a renewal of the bowling alley license for strikes. Resolution forty-two is authorizing a contract for diesel fuel through the Morris County Cooperative Pricing Council not to exceed sixty thousand dollars and funded through the two thousand twenty-one operating budget. Resolution forty-three is authorizing contract for motor gasoline through the co-op, not to exceed one hundred fifty thousand and funded through the two thousand twenty-one budget. Resolution forty-four, ratifying the award of a purchase order contract for rock salt, Atlantic salt of Lowell, Massachusetts, not to exceed one hundred twenty thousand dollars and funded through the two thousand twenty-one budget. Resolution forty-five is a designated employer representative for controlled substances and alcohol use and testing procedures for commercial driver's licenses, and that is appointing Director of Public Works, Count O'Brien, and Personnel Director Sandra Emmerich. Those are the resolutions and the agenda items you may comment on, and then again, the aforementioned Resolution forty-six, which is the condemning the January sixth seed in Washington. Anyone wishing to comment, please raise your hand here now. Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting. And we move on to agenda item number one, which is the Community Place redevelopment plan. We will bring our planner Susan, Dr. Susan Blickstein on board. Thank you. I wanted to do a quick overview of the redevelopment and then take questions or discussion from the council.
Yes. So the redevelopment plan is dated January the sixth. It is something that the Planning Board has had discussion and input on. It addresses all of the statutorily required components of a redevelopment plan. Particularly when you get to the back of the document, it starts to sound very much like a legal document. That's not a coincidence. The local redevelopment housing law has some very specific requirements and there are components of this plan that follow that. The part of the plan that I think tends to be of greatest interest starts on page eight, and it is essentially the development, planning, and design standards, which function collectively, is really the zoning for the property. So this is a slightly over half an acre parcel. It's around just over twenty-three thousand square feet. And in discussions with the Planning Board, the approach that was taken was to include some parameters for issues that they felt needed to be clearly quantified, but to allow as much flexibility and creativity as is possible on a rectangular site that is just over half an acre. So starting on page eight, you will see the principal permitted uses, which are a hundred percent affordable housing, rental housing. There is also a permitted use for affordable supportive housing, which is something that the Borough may or may not opt to include on this site. I'll note that the settlement agreement that the Borough entered into with Fairshire Housing Center that was approved by the court does require at least thirty-two family rental units across the site or sites, in this case, the Civic Center parcel and this parcel. And this parcel, as laid out in the redevelopment plan, can accommodate no more than fourteen units total. So if you look at pages really eight through ten, these are the components that address some of the development parameters. The thing that the Planning Board felt strongly about was to convey with some inspirational images the kind of feel that they hope to see created on this property and that it could be achieved with a townhouse sort of style, very residential architecture, and that that architecture could skew slightly more traditional. It could skew to something that is primarily brick, but with various architectural elements included or a varied hardy plank, you know, that there's flexibility on materials and on the architecture, but that it be no taller than a single-family home can be in the borough, which is thirty-five feet, and that it really be designed cohesively to really feel like it fits in that location. The access is, has to be from Community Place. This redevelopment parcel does not actually touch itself, the Civic Center parcel, so for purposes of this redevelopment plan, though it might be possible in the future to envision some connection, for purposes of this redevelopment plan, it is being treated as a standalone piece of property. I want to point out that you'll see some very standard provisions around landscaping and lighting and pedestrian connectivity and design. But if you turn to page eleven and twelve, you'll see a variety of images that are of a scale that's predominantly two stories. These are sort of very different, some of them architecturally from each other, but they each represent something that's cohesive in the way of an architectural scheme. And that was something very important in the Planning Board's discussion. As the Borough doesn't have a selected redeveloper at this time, and there is no defined plan for the property, the Planning Board felt that those images would communicate sort of a variety of options, but a scale that they feel is appropriate for that property, no more than how tall a house could be, and with units generally facing Community Place, so the front door to the street and some buffering and possibly some fencing around the rear and the sides that abut the school property. So that's sort of, to the extent that there's a little bit of a concept plan that informs that it was those things that were communicated to me in the Planning Board discussions. I'm happy to, you know, I don't, didn't want to go through it in painful detail, but I'm happy to answer questions. I do want to point out that the other piece of redevelopment and that is a very important agreement that also guides the development, the use, the maximum number of units, guides financial contributions, management and operations, is the redevelopers agreement. And that is something that obviously can't be negotiated until a redeveloper is selected. So this redevelopment plan is one step. The Borough would also be issuing a request for qualifications to get materials and interest and qualifications from experienced rural housing redevelopers and then be negotiating a redevelopers agreement that will go into a lot of detail on a number of matters not typically covered in a redevelopment plan itself.
Thank you, Susan. Very good overview, and as you pointed out, a couple of key elements. This is a half-acre rectangular, so the, you know, the details of being able to do, you know, a similar type of redevelopment plan as was done on the Green Village Road School site is not appropriate for the site. The, we have a very tight timeframe, the fact that there's some good outline on what our goal is for the site, including the images will help. And in the R F Q, part of the R F Q process will also be, you know, selecting a developer that has the experience in delivering the type of projects that fit Madison very well. Other questions or comments from the council? Bob Landrigan and then Deb.
Yeah. First of all, I want to say that I'm very impressed with the plan itself. And the look and feel of the houses seem very nice. I've already picked out my favorite. It's on page eleven in the upper left corner. But I do have one question. It's a bit of a concern. You would mention that Community Place is the main access to it. Is there any way that Walnut Street possibly as an exit could be added to that? And the reason I say that's for an emergency vehicle, as it is right now, a community place to get in on is very, very difficult. This will also be a challenge for a fire truck or an ambulance. Could another exit be incorporated into it?
One of the challenges in including that in the redevelopment plan itself is that the Borough does not own the property through which that would be required for the connection to be made. And so the Borough is, would need to be granted an easement at a minimum in order to create a future connection. And if that's something that the Board of Ed and the Housing Authority, who owns the adjacent property, are all amenable to, that's certainly something that could be achieved in the long run. I mean, given our timeframe in the court system, it's, I'm not sure it's achievable within that timeframe, but certainly one thing that we can ask a redeveloper, once they're selected, to sort of think about is at least creating an area where a connection could be made in the future, so it works on their property, the property that they control.
That's unfair.
Yeah. So should those pieces then fall into place? Then there is a place where it can connect to on this property and then come out to Community Place.
Good. Okay. Thank you.
Sure. Deb?
Ironically, I have the same question, but from the other direction, which you've answered, but just so that people know what I was thinking is to ease some of the congestion concerns on Walnut would be to have it be one way in through Walnut, connect to the Community Place and exit only that way, which might help some of the flow of traffic. But you've answered it, but I just wanted people to know that's where I was headed.
We'll keep having those conversations going, as Susan pointed out, but it's timeframe very difficult. Rachel?
Thank you, Mayor. I, you know, maybe now is not the time to get into the details of this, or perhaps it is, but I feel like I wanted to point out one thing in particular under sustainable slash green design. I admire the intent of this bullet point nine on page ten, but it's a little broad for me. I think we should go further than to simply encourage green slash sustainable site design methods and do more of what we have in the second sentence here. The use of low-impact development slash green water storm, green stormwater infrastructure is good and high R-value construction are good. I think we should add high-performance, energy-efficient mechanical systems to that, which is really the crux of the kind of sustainability I think we need to pursue, instead of just broadly saying like green design, which is quite vague and could encompass a lot. We have an opportunity with this development to demonstrate that affordable housing can have a low-carbon footprint, and I'd like to emphasize that in the redevelopment plan. And then just a minor note, there's a sentence in item seven that says, "All exterior mechanical equipment shall be located on rooftops behind parapet walls to limit visibility, which may not be applicable to this construction type with peak roofs." So I think that can probably be struck.
Yeah, it may not, but there are some, if you look at some of the inspirational images, there are some that have flatter roofs. I mean, I don't know that, you know, that would be the number one, you know, desired design, but I didn't want to create a potential problem if that was something that that might be feasible. You know, I'm glad you raised that, Rachel, because one of the challenges we had with the Planning Board is that the Planning Board is not, as you all know, involved in negotiating the financial aspects of the project and what contribution the Borough may make from its Affordable Housing Trust Fund, what financing is possible. And there was, and we wanted to flag that we think that those things are important. And I think our thinking was that the redevelopers agreement, once those details are hashed out, would be where the specifics of those commitments would then be, you know, detailed. But we felt a little bit at a disadvantage because we're sort of writing the plan now, but we don't know, we don't, we don't have a pro forma, we don't, you know, we're not in, we're not at that point. And so I think the reason the language, I mean, you picked up on exactly the challenge is that we felt that, really not sure if we could or if the Borough governing body would want that to be a hard requirement in the redevelopment plan, knowing that it can be part of the redevelopers agreement. So we were sort of like, that's exactly what the discussion was in addressing that.
My suggestion would be, since we mentioned two specific things, you know, high R-value construction is generally a very good goal. I don't see a downside of saying high-performance, energy-efficient equipment.
No, I don't either. I'm not, I'm not responding to that. I think that that's absolutely like a minor, that's incredible.
Okay, great.
I don't, no, it was more that I'm responding to the maximum extent practicable, that it's not, you know, we're not saying.
We're not giving performance criteria or anything like that, I understand.
Okay. Got it.
Very good suggestion. Any other comments or questions? Okay, so this is ordinance one, two thousand twenty-one, that is listed for introduction. And now we bring our CFO, Jim Burnett, on board to go over our various capital budgets and open space. And you're muted, Jim.
Thank you, Mayor. Just looking to share my screen here with the presentation. Bear with me here. I'm going to close that, realizing I have a lot of windows open and that's causing issues with trying to find which screen to share. I apologize. Where is it? I apologize, Mayor. That's right in front of me. No. Bear with me again. I apologize.
Not a problem.
I promise I'll be quick. Okay. There we go. Okay, hopefully you can see that screen in a moment. It's a budget presentation. I'm just going to take you through some slides very quickly, as mentioned by Bailey, Finance Liaison. We have a schedule and we have a number of steps in the process here. Okay, let's advance the slide. As briefly mentioned, we're going to briefly discuss the annual budget process. Today, we're going to talk about the two thousand twenty Open Space Fund activity and possible upcoming projects, and we're going to, Bob Hope will talk about the roads program. This is the proposed hearing schedule. I'm not going to repeat it because Councilwoman Bailey mentioned it. It's April twenty-sixth, not April twenty-seventh for the budget adoption. That'll be corrected. And I'm not going to even discuss these slides. I show them all the time during the budget process. I've just had them on there in case someone's clicking on the annual budget process and happen to come across these, that they understand the process that the budget involves the three entities that Councilwoman Bailey mentioned. We have a current fund with the electric utility, we have the water utility, and the three capital accounts that are associated with those three funds. It's just information I'm always going to put out there in presentations, but I'm not going to talk about it this evening. I'm also not going to talk about budget or spending plan. In short, this basically says that really what we're doing is passing a spending plan. We're forced to stay within the spending parameters once the budget is passed. Unlike a whole where you can change your budget if your income increases, that's not something we can do here. So it's really, truly better to be thought of as a spending plan. To that end, I wanted to present the open space budget. To that end, I wanted to present the open space budget. This is actually last year's open space report. I just wanted to show it for, to include it as part of the presentation here. And also you can see how things work. You can see that eighty-nine thousand dollars here came in as field rental fees and immediately goes out as an expense. And then it actually drops down into the reserve, which is three sixty-seven fifty-four. So when I click on the next screen, you'll see how the three sixty-seven five forty increases. So it's right here, the three fifty-seven five forty increased by a certain dollar amount. And it's this, it's the thirty-two thousand dollars in rental fees we got this year. We got them in as income, we expensed them out and we put them in there. So every year that reserve is increasing based on the field rentals and user fees. Note, as it said over here, big drop off in field rental and user fees, obviously pandemic driven. As mentioned before previously, we had eighty-nine thousand dollars in user fees. Interest revenue was also down significantly. If I were to go backwards, let's do that. Easy ability to do that with Zoom. We had twenty-three thousand dollars in interest income. This year, we only had eight thousand dollars in interest income this year versus last year. So as you can see, interest is down significantly. It's just driven by the interest rates. The balances were relatively the same. Throughout the year, we had two large funding ordinances, forty-one and forty-two, that went out at the end of the year. They're still part of the bank balances. They've just been encumbered. So we've had a reasonably healthy balance, but the interest rates are down. This report shows the debt payments. It shows the dual reciprocal easement payments, which are paid to the Rockefeller Group, and shows the other items that council has approved over the year for spending the ordinance for the museum, the ordinance for the Masonic Lodge, Luke Miller Fence Repairs, M E C, M E T C Construction Documents and Historic Preservation Guidelines, which are passed by resolution. Every year, we have a tax levy that's about the same, about six hundred and fifty, six hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. And we're fortunate to have a significant amount of funds in Greenacre Funds, which are in reserve down here. And every year, we use a portion of that to pay off the principal amount of our debt. So that's this one hundred and forty-five thousand dollar revenue there. I think the most important thing to talk about will be the projects, and we'll talk about that in a minute. But I don't know if there's any questions that we have. I think I really just want to show that we started with a balance of seven hundred and thirty-nine thousand and we are ending with a balance of less than four hundred thousand dollars. Of course, next year, we will have our tax, or this year, later this year, we'll have our tax levy and that will, this number will increase to back up to a little over a million dollars.
So Deb?
Just a quick question. With the field rentals and user fees, that number hopefully will at least go up from last year, but we're still expecting it to be down this year since, as of now, winter sports aren't happening and that sort of thing. How big of an impact could that potentially have if this continues for a couple of years? Hopefully it doesn't. Not saying I want it to, but.
It really has to do with the life of the field. They have worn well. I know that Madison High School had a field they purchased a number of years ago, ten, ten, twelve years ago, that had to be replaced. This field has worn well, but the useful life, you know, decreases every year. And the warranty and alike are pretty much gone. So we're at a point where at some point, we're going to need to replace it. You know, hopefully that's going to be four to five years out. You are correct. If we don't get back up to having eighty-nine thousand, a hundred thousand dollars of field revenues, we will fall short and we'll have to look in three, four, five, six years down the road for other sources of funds to reskin the turf fields at the MRC.
Thanks.
Any other questions on the last couple of slides? All right, Jim, go ahead.
This is a list of possible projects and certainly welcome Ray or Austria to jump in on this, but I'll talk to it if they would like me to. These are the projects that we have seen come, been discussed, talked about, and even brought to the open, potentially at least discussed at the Open Space Committee. There's remediation at the MRC, which will allow for a path to go through. Those funds can come from a reserve. I'm going to flip back one page, Mayor, and you'll see that there's a three hundred thousand dollar gift that was given specifically for remediation. So that hundred and eighty thousand dollars can come from that, from that particular, from that particular pocket of dollars. But the MRC, a handicap accessible trail, the front plaza of Hartley Dodge may need a few more dollars. We're in the midst of negotiating a final contract on that. But if there are change orders that are required due to unforeseen conditions underneath this lab, Parks Advisory Committee is in discussions for having a master plan for a hundred and seven thousand dollars. The second Dodge Field House, which is the one that has the food in it closer to the baseball field, that's an item that's been talked about. And then these other items as well, Summer Hill Park Trail repairs and a parking lot are all. So you can just see that, you know, we talked about there being a million dollars in the fund. There's over five million in potential funding requests. And when we go back to this, if we have a million dollars here, we've still got to spend three hundred and twenty thousand dollars right here on the annual debt payment. So in our minds eye, we should be thinking we have seven hundred or eight hundred thousand dollars available next year at most, and we have a significant number of funding requests. It's important to have this out. We don't know exactly when, for example, the additional turf field at the high school will happen. That was proposed to the Board of Ed a couple of years ago. It's dormant at this point. There's been recent talks about paddle tennis courts and basketball courts, but that has not been fully vetted with the Recreation Advisory Committee. So it's not even known whether it's supported by that. So I want to play to Austria or the mayor or anyone else to, or Ray Cody to jump in if they have any other comments regarding this list.
Yeah, just to reinforce what you just said on those last two items, have not been fully vetted and location may not even work. There is a group that are passionate about trying to bring paddle tennis into Madison. I've had conversations recently about other ways to approach that that could make that a reality in a sooner timeframe. So this is what we strive to do with this list is, you know, when there is some serious talk, whether fully vetted or not starts, we want to capture it just so we know what the possibilities are. Other comments or questions?
Just a couple of questions on the MRC remediation trails. And John and I met with Bob and Ken last week, and we were talking about trail maintenance. This is separate from what trail maintenance would be. This is different.
Yeah, Austria can.
Yeah, yeah. So I wanted to draw attention to the MRC handicap accessible path. We applied a couple of years ago for a trail grant with the county, which we received. So that's a twenty-eight eighty match. And that accessible path will be going from Ridgedale down to the Community Garden and loop around. When it loops around, it's looping around some of the contaminated area. And so that contaminatory area has to be remediated so that we can then put the path down. So that money comes from funds that were reserved several years ago to do that.
So thank you. That helps.
Yeah, and then one of the things is that Tom Solaki is doing with his, the master plan would indeed be, they would discuss maintenance of the parks and how you do maintain the trails and what have you. But no, DPW and engineering, they have to figure out what they need to maintain these trails because COVID has really demonstrated that people want to be outside and use these trails. And they, some of them need some work.
Go ahead, Deb, sorry.
No, that's okay. I was going to say that. No, that's very helpful. And that's one of the things I'm getting to because like the Summer Hill Park Trail repairs and the parking lot, which is great to see. I know when it was warm, that parking lot gravel area would become very packed. Even with COVID, people were parking and using the trail. So I'm actually glad to see that on there as well. And then my other, well, I had two questions. One was about the All Access Playground at Dodge Field. Is that, assuming we get no money for it, or would that be in addition to a grant potentially? And then the other one on the master plan, and I know Austria, you and I have talked a little bit about it, that just seems like a really high number for the Parks Master Plan. So I, you know, I'd love to get an idea of what they're looking for with that.
So we're in the process of trying to figure out whether that represents truly what the information that the Parks Committee wants and needs. And so that will be determined fairly quickly, whether we need to revise the plan and send it out to bid again. And with Summer Hill Park, we still have a portion of the trail that we told the part of the county park that we were going to have as part of the trail system. So we were committed to having to do that. Did I get all your points or?
The Dodge Field Playground. I was just curious if that amount was after a grant or if we got no money from another source.
No, Bob, I think that is, I'm hoping that is the number that's all encompassing. And we are looking at trying to get a grant, but we're not sure how successful we're going to be. So that's why that number is the size it is right now. It could get shaved down if we can find, you know, a grant and get approved. But it would be a handicap accessible playground. It is well, you know, long overdue to get that equipment upgraded and to get a surface that is, you know, up to date for kids to play on. And I just, you know, if anybody wants to see a truly great playground, go over to Verona. It's amazing. And I'm hoping that we can do that here at Dodge Field. Madison deserves a good playground.
Yeah, that's the, at least from my perspective, my oldest is eighteen and a half, and it's the same playground that we took him to as a toddler. So I would love to see it, and I love the idea of an all access playground where it's accessible to all and easier for all groups to intermingle when we can do that hopefully soon. Thanks, Austria. That was a big help, though.
Yeah, but we hoped, we had hoped to do something at the MRC, but that requires a lot of engineering and site work and site preparation that would be way over this number here. So we thought with it being in the center of town and the use of Dodge Field for farmers market and everything, this would be the appropriate place to put the dollars for a playground at this time.
Any other questions or comments at this point? Bob?
Just a quick question, Jim. The MRC debt, that I'm assuming was when the original project was, that was incurred from the original project. When is that supposed to be finished off?
You're teeing me up, Bob, for my next slide. So here's the, so thank you for doing that. You can see the, this is the entire debt schedule from 2013 forward. You can see that the turf field debt ends in 2028. And there's a continuation of payments on the land. Here's the hundred and forty-five thousand. Remember, I mentioned taking a hundred and forty-five thousand for green acres dollars for the principal on the land. So you can see every year here's the principal on the land. This column is the total debt for both. So if we were to kind of align this here, we would see that this number is what we're going to be paying this year in debt, three one three. So that's the summation of the principal and interest and principal and interest for both. You can see the declining balances of remaining principal for both the land and the bond. And I'm going to say it as a Madison resident that I think, you know, buying fifty acres of property for three million dollars all in, once we had all of the funds come in from the various sources, green acres and everything else, it was one of the, one of the, it was a fantastic purchase by the borough. Just the, my editorial position.
Okay.
So that's the MRC debt. That's really it for the open space discussion. It's purely separate from the budget. We have this so you understand the funds that are flowing in and out. We have this, most importantly, so you understand the potential projects. Because you will, I'm sure, be voting on projects as you did in last year. All these ordinances here were all voted on by the council in 2020. I'm sure these projects, number of these projects will be voted on in 2021. It's good to know what's on the docket. And with that, if there aren't any other questions, I would like to invite Bob Vogel to come up and speak very briefly about the road reconstruction projects.
Hello, all. As you can see, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, right. As you can see, Jim's got a summary schedule here. And normally, it is our case to try to advance the road projects so that we can bid these and get them on the street, get the awards made and get the contractors in place prior to the summer season. So in the case of road reconstruction, on the next slide, Jim, you'll see a series of four projects there for 2021. And these are in design phase. Plans and specs are essentially completed. The Anthony and Wayne Boulevard projects are essentially ready for bid now. Those projects will be up on our website in terms of the plans and specifications for public review. And they are not DOT funded. We did get on the fourth item there, some funding from Green Avenue. Got a hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars, you could see at the bottom of that schedule for Green Avenue bump outs through DOT. So Anthony and Wayne are all directly funded from Borough Capital. Also Cook Avenue Parking Lots directly funded from Borough Capital. Cook Avenue Parking Lot has a portion taken from Electric Capital also to deal with utility relocation. The challenge with Cook Avenue Parking Lot is essentially utilities at this stage of the game because we have Verizon, we have Altice, we have legacy copper wires there that have to be relocated. And none of the utility companies have been particularly eager to relocate utilities at Cook Avenue Parking Lot for us because we've been sending requests out for at least six months trying to get estimates from them and scope of work pulled together so we can cooperate on the Cook Avenue Parking Lot. However, the site plan is essentially, is essentially completed exclusive of utilities and utility relocation. So it's worthy of talking about. It's something we could put up on our website, but I'd rather have the utilities part of those projects hard and fast before we get them up on the website. It's up to the governing body as far as whether we put those up for discussion at this stage of the game or not. And that essentially expends a fair amount of municipal general capital, one point six seven million. Any questions about?
Yes, Bob, I have a question about the Green Avenue bump outs. And Ben Wokowicz discussed this several years ago. Concern for the cyclists, because when you have a raised bump out, a cyclist has to go around them and it's dangerous. But there are bump outs that are flush with the surface that serve the same purpose and are safe for cyclists. And again, with COVID, the people are riding their bikes a lot more. So is there any chance we can do a bike friendly bump out as opposed to a raised bump out that we have on Prospect, which is harrowing to go down that hill and go around those bump outs when you're on a bike?
I would love to find a happy medium, what I've asked Dennis to help out with, since the DOT application isn't really all that specific with technical details at this stage of the game. And I think the DOT will play along with us in terms of what the alternatives are for the type of bump out. I've asked Dennis to put a series of options together. And what we're going to do is get those out to you and have a general discussion about what is the best approach to those bump outs before we move forward.
Oh, good.
And we're working with a wider than normal than what typically would be the street if we were to design it today. Is that correct?
Green Avenue is thirty-six to thirty-eight feet wide. So it's a plenty wide avenue to have a number of different, you know, curb extension alternatives there. Obviously, we wanted to include the. Obviously, we wanted to include the rapid flash beacons for the crosswalks for pedestrians at the two locations on Green Avenue as part of the state grant. So I think that's, that's a good and necessary part of those projects. But I agree, the bicycle accommodation is definitely necessary on the bump outs, and we don't want to leave, we don't want to leave that off the table.
And just to refresh the public, what, the intersections at the bump outs are going at?
The state funded intersections were at Hillside Avenue and Wilmer Street. And I know that we've talked separately about bump outs at Garfield on Green Avenue. And obviously, the other end of Wilmer Street up at Green Village Road, which is a county roadway. But those aren't funded options at this stage of the game. The DOT funded options are at Wilmer and Hillside.
And the Hillside is one of our highest accident prone intersections right now, so it's one of the reasons we look there. And also, Wilmer is a school intensive intersection with typically cars parked very often. So as I often say, in bump outs are more easily justified where there's car parking, because bicycles have already been forced out into the travel lanes because of the parking and the bump outs now make it safer for pedestrians. Deb?
All right, I have several questions, but I'll stick with the, the Green Avenue to start with. Is it possible, since it is wider than normal, to do actual bike lanes on that road? So that it, you know, it would also help. I know we've got the parking spots, but there's lots of towns that have the parking spots and then a bike lane or the bike lane and then the parking spots. Because, you know, a lot of the roads around here, I'm finding the bikes are having trouble. You know, and I know Central's County, but, you know, they're driving in that little shot shoulder that is kind of a bike lane, but not really, but they're having to go around all the cars that are, that are parked. So just food for thought. I don't know if that's something that's feasible and would change things too drastically. My bigger, my bigger question, and it kind of leads into your next slide as well, but it ties into the Cook Avenue Parking Lot. My first question on the Cook Avenue Parking Lot, has the DDC been consulted at all? I'm assuming Lisa has been, but has it gone to that, the DDC as far as design for that?
Yeah, it has been fully vetted with a DDC. And the, the goal that we are delivering with the Cook Avenue is one in an aesthetic and design view, something far more appropriate for downtown Madison. And then for a safety view, right now, there are four or five curb cuts for in and out. There's also the number of times people are going the wrong ways. There's the awkward thing at the one end where you're, you got the split, so it addresses all, all all those issues and creating a much more welcoming and pedestrian and parking friendly and also creating more handicap spots. So it's, it's been true.
And then, but along with that, the question I guess I have, and I, I mentioned this to, to you last week, Bob. Given again, the, the walking and everybody being out and about, some of our sidewalks are in miserable condition, for lack of a better word. Some of them are fine, some of them are iffy. But would it be possible? We, I, you know, when I talked to you, it was talking about maybe we put off some of the roads that are in really good condition. I said, like, my street, which has been pushed off anyway, it doesn't need to be repaid, even though it was technically up in the rotation, but we've done such a good job. Since we're getting pushback from the utilities, and it's going to delay that potentially a little bit, could we pull money from there? You know, I, I'm pulling numbers out of my, my hat, but a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollars and say, let's get these sidewalks kind of done. And then just have somebody do that, because I know one of the things you said was the contractors, it gets pushed back, you know, it's, it just gets kind of buried and doesn't always get done.
Real quick, Bob, actually, I could jump in before you. So this is a document council did receive before it's posted online. It's the five year capital plan. You're just going to see a much lower ask for general capital here on this year compared to, you know, a typical four to five and a half million dollar capital ask. That's due to pandemic and reduction in revenues. And as Austria said, we pushed off by in, at least one meeting, the introduction of road programs. So it, it, based on our, and depending on our conversations at the next council meeting and the meeting after that, I think that'll really determine for sure whether we have the ability to just easily do two hundred thousand. I think we will, but I don't want to presume what the council will, will want. So I think there'll be some good discussions at the next council meeting regarding that, and then Bob, I'll let you continue. I was also going to say that most, many of the sidewalks are the homeowner's responsibility, but we do have a program that is probably not well known enough as far as the homeowner being able to share the costs with the borough. So we should, yes, we have, have it funded enough and then get the word out.
Get the word out, correct.
Well, and my question about the, sorry.
Go, go ahead, Deb, and then John.
My, just my quick follow up question about that, because I didn't, I found out about that ordinance through this discussion is, I'd like to, it may not be the appropriate time in the next meeting or two, but to look at that ordinance, because I'm thinking if I'm responsible for the sidewalk that's in front of my house, well, that's this five feet. And then John's responsible for the sidewalk in front of his foot, you know, his house. Well, if it's in okay condition, he's not, you know, are we going to end up with wonky sidewalks because they're being done piecemeal? But that may be a later discussion as part of it as well.
I think that's much more of a financial discussion, Deb, than it is one as to procedure in the ordinance, replacing all sidewalks on a road on a programmatic basis is far more expensive.
John?
Yeah, my, my problem is, first of all, I want to support what Deb is saying. Because having been involved with the DDC for the past three years, you know, we have been after sidewalks for a long time, it seems to me, and I've been discussing it quite a while. I think that when we talked the other day, Bob, we talked about perhaps sitting down and really putting pencil to paper and developing a sidewalk improvement plan of some kind. No matter how long it takes or what the extension is, is to do it. I don't think anything's being done right now, to tell you the truth. In all honesty, not that I can see. So I think it's sitting down and developing a plan is probably the most important thing that we can do about sidewalks.
There, there's two major classifications, I would say, is, we could probably pick it down differently, but it's, you know, talk about sidewalks in the commercial district different than sidewalks overall in town are, need to be attacked two different ways. For those of us that grew up in Madison, remember the diamonds in downtown, which was a disaster and, and many different iterations. The, you know, we are hoping for 2022 is the reconstruction of Waverly Place, which would take care of that. And I think we need that, who had, who need to come up with a plan for the overall maintenance or, or upgrade of the sidewalks in downtown, because the pavers are getting more and more dangerous every year. Austria?
Yeah, well, I, I do think the ordinance would have to be changed. And I do think also, we, in complete streets, we do discuss sidewalks when we discuss roads reconstruction, so that, that kind of fits in with what Deb was saying. We do do, you know, we do a street, we look at the sidewalks and we do the sidewalks, right, Bob?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay.
Deb?
Just to clarify, what brought it to my attention is all the walking, my husband and I have been doing Central Avenue sidewalks on one side, especially on the side. I don't know which side it is. If you're walking up from Main Street, it's the left side. There, there were even spray painted by, it was either the fire or the police department, because they're not safe. And I know that's not the case only on Central Avenue. I'm not looking for a town, I mean, I would love a town wide, but like Ridgedale sidewalks were just done, those are fine. But maybe it's worth a drive around town to figure out which sidewalks, and I agree, the ones in downtown definitely need to be taken care of as well. But I was thinking more, we've got all these people walking, we've got people riding their bikes, more kids are walking to school. And we've got these sidewalks that are stroller hazards or tripping hazards. And I'm noticing it more because I'm out more, because I have to get out of my house.
The, the, well, two, two quick things, and maybe we can move on. One, I think we've had interns over the years kind of put together a condition of sidewalks, but if I'm making that up, that might be a good intern project. The other part of the communication to our residents is when a sidewalk that technically they might be responsible for has heaved because of a street, boroughed street tree, that, that's, that's a different approach, because we need to, you know, take care of the roots, save our street tree, take care of the root structure and repair the sidewalk. And so that more often falls onto the borough's responsibility. And that's where a lot of these problems are, are caused by street trees. All right.
So Jim, the last slide was for Millen overlay, and there's six Millen overlay projects there, as you can see. These were basically prioritized according to a street scanning that was done in the middle of last winter. And so the scanning was different than what we have done previously with regards to interns and staff going out and, and evaluating each street and each sidewalk and each curb individually. The scanning mechanism is, is a hundred percent digital and very impartial as far as its evaluation, so pretty accurate. And that's how we came up with these priorities for the Millen overlay project. As you can see, there's a line item down there for seventy five thousand dollars for sidewalks and pavers, which, as we've discussed, we may expand at some point at the expense of another line item.
And just as a reminder, Woodland Road was originally in the twenty twenty, we could kick that because, in order to pave our parking lots while they were empty. And having driven that, I think it'd be, that's the biggest ticket item, and it'd be a tough one to kick again, so.
Right, agreed.
Any other comments or questions on?
Thank you.
Okay, that's it, Mayor. Thank you very much. So we'll be, you know, put, put in all these pieces of the budget puzzle together in the coming meetings and, and as we move forward and have a better idea of where we are budget wise and in this pandemic world, we'll firm up those numbers. So very good input, and I think Bob's got some marching orders. All right, our third discussion item is the resolution for Borough Madison condemning the January sixth siege in Washington. Let me just give a little background on this. I will, any other council members that also want to comment, and then I will add, read the resolution and ask for a motion. But as I said earlier, we've added this resolution to address the attack on our government on January sixth, a day that will be forever a part of the history of our country, a day that should have never happened. One could say, why would this council take up this resolution? It had nothing to do with local government. Well, it has everything to do with local government, and for us to stand by and not say something just lends credence to those who will try to spin and downplay the events of a very sad day. Let us be clear about what last Wednesday was and wasn't. It wasn't a demonstration that got out of control. I'm not even sure if the word riot is correct. It was a planned attack on our government that was created by lies around election results. Encouraged by the words of a sitting president who told followers to come to Washington, be there and be wild. And when they arrived, some with weapons, pipe bombs, zip tie handcuffs and images of hate in flags and shirts. They were all told to march on the Capitol, be strong and take back the country. To seek out the Speaker of the House, Vice President and others who were not loyal. What did those who spoke expect would happen? Five people did not have to die. The damage to, to the Capitol should never have occurred. And now we have a spread of COVID nineteen virus among our elected officials who hid for hours in tight quarters. That should not be their price to serve for service. Our democracy was attacked by domestic terrorists and we cannot stand idly by. Other comments? Maureen?
I'm sure that no one thought we'd be discussing an attack on the nation's capital by a violent mob meant on overturning our national election and threatening our legislative branch of government. This attack purposely instigated by the President of the United States, tried to shut down the Congress in the Capitol Building in a failed attempt to prevent the Congress from certifying the presidential elections. The rioters surged through the Capitol Building, sowing chaos, destroying property and leaving five dead, including a Capitol Police Officer from New Jersey. What does this moment ask of us here in Madison? Make no mistake, this was an assault on our democratic institutions. As the historian Timothy Snyder writes, is institutions that help us to preserve decency. They need our help as well. Institutions do not protect themselves. They require a vigorous defense. Without a stronger, tyranny takes over. We need to speak the truth. Truth matters. For over two hundred and fifty years, we have seen a generally peaceful transfer of power from one group to another, no matter how disappointing the results to the losing party. Here in Madison, we must all, Democrats, Republicans, independents, come together to say, this is enough. We must commit now to supporting our constitutional institutions. Failing to do so could result in irreparable damage to our Republican. How small towns like Madison run their governance can serve as an example to all across the country. Transparency, honesty, openness and accountability are paramount to successful governments. What we do here tonight and every day in Madison is essential for the success of our republic. What we do and how we do it matters. Let's get back to work.
Thank you. Other, any other comments? John? You're muted.
I thought about this after I received the email today, Bob. I'll keep this short, but it, it's what I feel. Everyone is entitled to have and to express their personal opinion. But absolutely not in the way we witnessed on January sixth. I felt personally violated by the subversive terrorists who attacked the very bastion of our democracy. I also felt personally betrayed by the sitting president who directly incited the riots and, and destruction, which resulted in the death of five people. The total lack of security response despite weeks of warnings, there would be destructive tactics by many bad elements was ridiculous. The assault on our constitution is unacceptable. What are we going to do going forward? Bring the violators to justice, all of them. Eliminate the cause of the problem and his cronies to avoid the possibility of similar occurrences. And lastly, probably most importantly, I think, as Maureen was hint leaning toward, come together to start the healing process. Listen to opposing viewpoints. Continue a conversation to bring people together with mutual fairness, justice and respect. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you. Any other comments? Rachel?
Mayor. We have seen frightening images of the attacks inside and outside the Capitol. And we know by now our lawmakers' lives were under grave threat that day of the attack. However, despite our fear and our anger, I know that the United States government as an institution was not in danger of being overthrown on January. But instead, what that angry white mob took from us that day is rather the illusion that we are better than this. American exceptionalism has been sacked. This stunning realization gives me a basis and a grounding for the real feelings of sadness, anger, fear and disbelief that we all felt witnessing last week's white power riot. I am not fearful of a violent mob taking out our government, but at what this insurrectionist attack says so baldly about our country, about white nationalism, the Republican Party, its leaders who cravenly cling to power and our future as a people. In truth, the US government is not about to collapse. But in fact, this is America and we have to live with ourselves as we strive with clearer eyes to fix our broken country and its exquisitely tuned systems of racial oppression and harm, which exist to preserve power for white people at all costs. I'd like to call for the council to pass a strongly worded resolution. R forty-six, which is before us tonight, states that, quote, there was a horrific siege. It condemns, quote, those who incited and took part in the rioting and other criminal activity. It mentions that the rioters carried Confederate flags and wore clothing with anti-Semitic slogans, but not that they broke down the Capitol doors flying Trump flags and wearing Trump campaign gear. The resolution before us relies on broad passive language, which avoids the real action before us as Americans and elected officials, which is not only to censure, but to hold accountable those responsible for this act of terror and insurrection. To be clear, I'm not opposed to passing this resolution, but I feel we must subsequently adopt a strong, clear public statement in response to this seditious attack, which was incited by the President of the United States and certain members of Congress. We should do the following. We should call for governmental censure of President Trump for his role in inciting this insurrection. We should demand the immediate removal of President Trump through the twenty-fifth amendment or impeachment. We should publicly condemn the white privilege that was granted by law enforcement to January sixth perpetrators. And we should call out the stark difference in how police prepared for and treated the white supremacist insurrectionists versus peaceful protesters of color. We should insist on a thorough joint agency investigation into the failure to secure the Capitol building, both in advance and in the midst of the insurrection. Their appropriate coordination with federal and municipal law enforcement and the National Guard. And we should demand that the Department of Justice prosecute all those who incited or were complicit in the insurrection, including President Trump and members of Congress to the fullest extent of the law. I hope my council colleagues will consider further action to incorporate these demands into a subsequent resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. And that can be brought forward next meeting. Um, council agrees. Any other comments? And let me, uh, read this resolution. I will ask for a, uh, motion to approve again, resolution R forty-six, twenty twenty-one, resolution, the Borough of Madison condemning January sixth siege in Washington. Whereas as a local, uh, local elected officials, we have a civic responsibility to speak out and to stand up in support of the basic principles of our nation's democracy. And whereas on January sixth, twenty twenty-one, there was a horrific siege in Washington, D.C. of the United States Capitol Building, which rioters broke in, some carrying correct Confederate flags and wearing clothing with anti-Semitic slogans and ransacking the building and terrorizing lawmakers and law enforcement who are in fear of their, for their lives. And whereas five people died in the violence, including the Capitol Police Officer Brian Sicknick, military veteran and a New Jersey native. And whereas the insurrection was an assault at the core values of our democracy and aimed at stopping peaceful transition of power. And whereas while voters may be disappointed in an outcome of an election, there is no justification for deadly violence. Now therefore be resolved by the Council of the Borough of Madison, County of Morris, State of New Jersey, that we condemn this unlawful insurrection and those who incited and who took part, part in the rioting and other criminal activity. We are committed to upholding democratic principles and supporting the outcome of free and fair elections we call on all elected officials from local to federal to join us in condemning the siege of the U.S. Capitol on January sixth, twenty twenty-one and join us in support of a peaceful transition of power, legal system, traditions and institutions of our great country. And I have a motion.
Mayor, I move resolution forty-six dash twenty twenty-one.
Second.
And just as a also background, this is a, um, uh, resolution that's being adopted by, uh, other towns, um, in Morris County and in the state. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please. John?
I just wanted to say I support everything that Rachel said. She stated very articulately and thoroughly, and I really think we ought to not forget it and we should, we should absolutely talk about it and develop something more going forward.
Thank you. Any, any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Burn?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Surlick?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you very much. And there are no ordinance for hearing. So now we are on our second of, um, two invitations for discussions of the public. And this is one that you can comment on any topic. And we ask you to, um, raise your hand by clicking, as I see several people have done so already. If you're on the phone, hit star nine when you are recognized and unmuted. Please state your name and address first. And after those comments, after you do that, um, remember to try to keep your comments to three minutes. We will give you one minute grace period and we will be stopped at four minutes. Um, Claire Whitcomb.
Hi, uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, twelfth Pearwood Road, Madison. Uh, first of all, I am the daughter of a U.S. History teacher and people have been asking me what my father would think about what happened on January sixth and, um, I have no words. So I'm very grateful that you have proposed this resolution and, uh, are taking a stand. Um, my comments are actually on, uh, the Cook Avenue parking lot and, um, the, my hope, which has been, um, raised before that previous paving and green infrastructure would be part of that project and indeed part of all, um, Madison's thinking about paving projects and parking lots. And I would also hope that, uh, we would consider how EV wiring would, uh, go in, assuming that we're going to need future EV charging stations and, um, that we will not have to dig up the paving and do it all over again. And I would just like to make a couple of comments about why the need for previous paving and, uh, rain gardens and things like that matter because Madison gets its water from the aquifer. And, uh, when, uh, stormwater runs off on, uh, paved surfaces, it, um, carries pollutants and it doesn't filter down into the aquifer adequately. And New Jersey's climate is warming faster than the rest of the Northeast region. Annual precipitation in New Jersey is expected to increase by four to eleven percent by twenty fifty. And as many of us can observe around us, we're getting these huge, heavy rainfalls where, um, we, we just get a lot of flooding and, um, particularly in parking lots, uh, things pool. And, uh, so I think this is just something that we need to work into our, um, way of thinking about paving projects. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Claire, and, uh, we'll pass those comments on to, uh, Bob. And I know through the design of, uh, Cook Avenue, there is some, um, maybe not rain garden per se, but some recharge, uh, collection areas that are, uh, incorporated in the, in the design. So it can be, uh, recharged. And next, Denise Katz.
Hi, thank you. Denise Katz, twenty-four Parkside Ave. I want to thank you for the resolution condemning the events of January sixth, but I also would like to see a stronger list of demands of our state lawmakers, some of whom refuse to condemn the actions. Um, I would like it to contain the similar bullet points that Rachel listed, uh, including a call for governmental censure of President Trump by name, demand for immediate removal of President Trump, publicly condemn the white privilege afforded by law enforcement to the rioters, insist on a thorough joint agency investigation into the failure to secure the Capitol building and demand that the Department of Justice prosecute all those who incited or were complicit in the insurrection, including President Trump and Republican lawmakers in Congress. Um, and it would be great if we could bring it up in a future meeting and I'll be listening. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Denise. Maria Slaybaugh.
Hello, this is Maria Slaybaugh, twenty-eight Stafford Drive. Um, I'd like to, I guess, just sincerely thank the council members for quickly putting forth a resolution that denounced this insurrection. And I really do appreciate how willing the council is to use your power as elected officials to speak up for democracy in our country. It is so important. And Mayor, as you alluded to, um, you know, some people I've seen comments actually online, uh, asking about why local governments are commenting and passing resolutions and making statements. And I agree with you. I think it's especially important that it happens at the local level. Um, it's important for all of us as residents, um, to see our elected officials with your credibility to give us, um, uh, an example and encouragement for us to speak up as well. And so I guess like, um, Rachel or like John Hoover, Denise Katz, I would like to also urge the council to go further with this resolution. I think it's a great start. The comments demonstrate how deeply you were affected like we all were, I think, by what happened, that you see the importance of your role in doing something about it and the power you have. And there is obviously an urgent need for timely action and for our elected officials at all levels to demand accountability and action. And so I do think it doesn't go far enough to denounce the insurrection. So I asked the council to add public calls to action aligning with what, um, Ms. Erlich listed. I think it was a comprehensive list and each of them are critical for our country. So again, I think the council, if you're quick and important action on this resolution and respectfully request the addition of those specific actions along aligning with what was shared. So thank you.
Thank you, Maria. Kathy Tackavell.
Kathleen Caca Valley, eighty-two Central Avenue. I have four brief comments. The first is that I was, uh, I would, I'm looking for clarification. I saw on the open space list that Summer Hill Park Trails and Parking Area were proposed, were on the suggested list for twenty twenty-one. But in a previous meeting, Bob Vogel presented that the, um, Summer Hill Parking Area and Driveway were on the road plan for, I believe, twenty twenty-three. So my question about clarification is whether those are, uh, whether the open space is in addition to the road plan or whether those are overlapping and some money could be removed from the Summer Hill, uh, open space request. Number two, the basketball courts and paddleball courts, uh, for the rec complex. I would just wonder where they would be proposed to be put, and I would hope that they would not be encroaching on the area of the recreation complex, the recreation and conservation complex that was set aside for conservation. Number three, um, I was surprised to hear that the Cook Avenue parking lot had been reviewed from a safety and a downtown development commission slash marketing aspect. But I didn't hear anything that said that the, uh, Environmental Commission had been asked for to review it from a, uh, environmental and green infrastructure um, aspect. And so I was a bit disappointed because I heard that the plans and specs were completed and neither the Environmental Commission nor the Sustainable Madison has, has been invited to view those plans yet. And fourthly, I, I really am a, a strong proponent of making sure that Green Avenue, quote, bump outs are bicycle friendly. I would hate to see something similar to what happened on Prospect Street happen again on Green Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kathy. Uh, we will, uh, pass the, um, ro- road, get a clarification, uh, on the road plan and Summer Hill Park. Uh, as mentioned before, the paddle courts most probably won't even happen in that location. The, those are way down the list. Those are really truly non fully vetted, non, um, uh, not current priority, uh, for the open space fund. So if they proceed, there'll be far more discussion on that. Uh, Cook Avenue parking lot, uh, will certainly, uh, you know, uh, with, uh, Claire's comments also, we'll make sure that the plans are shared. And, um, while it is, uh, ready to go out to bid, that we can, you know, make sure is, um, any things that we can do to take it even a step further would be good. But as noted, it, um, already is going to be a big improvement over what we have today, uh, in stormwater management and, uh, duly noted on the, uh, Green Avenue. And, uh, next, Rachel Barry.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. Hello. Uh, just wanted to say that I thank the council for making this effort to condemn the sorry. I'm sorry, Rachel Barry on Green Village Road. Sorry. Um, I just want to thank the council for making an effort to condemn the events of the Capitol on January sixth. This resolution connects in the minds of our community that all politics is indeed local politics. And as Rachel spoke about so thoughtfully, I would like to see the council work on a more strongly worded resolution and more aggressive action around anti-racism. The rioters who overtook the Capitol came from all over the country. This is a deep seated problem in every corner of the nation. Again, thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Uh, now Dennis, we only see first names, so make sure you, uh, say, uh, full name and address as you come.
Sure, Mr. Mayor. It's Dennis Schreiber, Amelia Court. Happy New Year to you all.
Yep, happy new year, Dennis.
Could we go back to the road construction budget for just a second and the Green Avenue bump outs? I don't understand what benefit we derive from them. I would think it makes biking very difficult, parking difficult and possibly even snow plowing. So I don't understand what the point of them is to begin with. And to spend three hundred thousand dollars on things that I think would derive very little benefit from, unless I'm proven wrong. Let's say just can the project postpone and save the, save the budget, some money. So that's the first issue. My second comment was regard to the resolution you just passed with regard to the violence that took place in Washington. And while I certainly do not condone that behavior, and I think it is criminal behavior, it needs to be punished. Did I miss the resolution passed by the borough for all the uprising and civil unrest that took place in Portland, Seattle, New York City, Minneapolis, Philadelphia and other places where public buildings and private buildings were damaged. People were injured, some killings took place, yet I don't see where your outrage was in that, in that regard. Maybe I missed it. Please correct me if I'm wrong. And Councilman Hoover, I have a question for you. You said in your comments that we have to start listening to opposing viewpoints. So can I assume that you oppose the shutting down of Parler? The canceling and doxing of individuals, both public and private? Because those viewpoints need to be expressed as well. And I would imagine you would want to listen to them as you stated. Thank you ver- very much.
Thank you, Dennis. And, uh, this is, um, not a Q and A, so, uh, won't be responses to those questions, but we appreciate your comments. And Bridget Daly.
Bridget, just please unmute yourself.
Bridget, you've been unmuted at our end, but you need to unmute at your end. Well, uh,
I'm sorry.
Yep, there we go. Yes, we can hear you now.
Star nine, I didn't realize I had to do that too. Bridget Daly, twenty-eight Keep Street. Um, I just want to thank the council and, and Mayor Conley. Um, I want to thank you all for taking a stand and passing the resolution, um, affirming the complete unacceptability of the violent insurrection that happened at the Capitol on January sixth and condemning those that, who incited it. Um, I also applaud and agree with Councilwoman Erlich's remarks that the President of the United States, as well as the seditious Republicans in Congress, need to be named and held accountable. And I would like to see, um, specific action called for in the next, uh, iteration of the resolution. Uh, and specifically the points that, uh, Rachel and, um, Denise already made, calling for governmental censure of President Trump for his role in inciting the insurrection, demand the immediate removal of President Trump either through the twenty-fifth amendment or impeachment, publicly condemn the white privilege afforded by law enforcement, uh, to January sixth perpetrators, insist on a thorough joint agency investigation into the failure to support the Capitol building, both in advance and in the midst of the insurrection, insurrection, and to demand the Department of Justice prosecute all those who incited or were complicit in the insurrection, including President Trump and members of Congress who tried to, uh, overturn the results of the free and fair election that we, uh, had in November. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, Maria, we, we cannot bring you back up again. It is, uh, only one, one comment, uh, period per person, um, to avoid a ongoing debate. So seeing no other hands up will close this part of the So seeing no other hands up will close this part of the meeting. I just do want to make one closing comment. I think I can speak for this council, that this council would speak up against violence and property damage at any point, but to compare what happened in the cities throughout this country to what happened on January 6th is missing the complete point of this conversation. This was an attack led on our Capitol that happened by words that came from the highest elected official in this country. Thank you. Now we move on to introduction ordinances. Will the clerk please read the statement?
Ordinance is scheduled for first reading, have a hearing date set for Monday, January the 25th, 2021. All will be published in the Madison Eagle, posted on bulletin board, and made available to members of the public requesting copies.
I call up ordinances for first reading, ask the borough clerk to read said ordinances by title. Ordinance 1-2021.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison, adopting a redevelopment plan for Lot 1.01 in Block 1601 in accordance with NJSA 48:12A-7.
Mayor, I move ordinance 1-2021.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, vote, please.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Erlick?
Yeah.
Mr. Landrigan?
You're muted there, Bob.
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance 2-2021.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison, amending Article 6 of the Madison Land Development Ordinance regarding stormwater management.
Mayor, I move ordinance 2-2021.
I second.
And as noted in John's report, this is required ordinance to meet the state standard. Any further discussion? Roll call, vote, please.
Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Erlick?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance 3-2021.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison, rescinding Chapter 195-11, Section A through H of the Borough Code entitled Appeal to Governing Body, permitting review by the Borough Council of the Board of Adjustment, final decisions.
Mayor, I move ordinance 3-2021.
I second.
And this ordinance is to help clear up a inconsistency that depending on what the type of the application that may go before Land Use Board, it may be, right now, it may be appealed to the council or may be appealed by the court. This makes it consistent that it was all, would go to the court. Any further discussion? Roll call, vote, please.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Erlick?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
And agenda resolutions, will the clerk please read the statement?
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected and followed in the minute.
I move Resolution 38-2021 through Resolution 45-2021.
Second.
Any council discussion or any that need to be pulled? Roll call, vote, please.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Erlick?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
All right. Thankfully, we have no unfinished business, as this is the first meeting of the year anyway, but we wouldn't want that to happen. And there is no approval vouchers. Correct. So under new business, I would like to make the following appointments, asking council confirmation for the local emergency planning council, Richard Wall, Drew University, one year term through December 31st, 2021, and the utility advisory committee, Ross Snyder, Pomeroy Road, for terms through December 31st, 2023, and also through the same term, Joe Belverchuk of Beach Avenue.
Mayor, I move the following, those appointments, the three appointments.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And Mr. Landrigan?
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all for a very productive meeting.
Good night, everybody.
Night.